Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Commissioner Bowerly?
Here.
Commissioner Berkley?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pesel?
Here.
Commissioner Heinen?
Here. Want to turn the switch on for our mics? Thank you.
Okay. Amend the agenda, approve. I'd say we have one item here for sure.
That's for ditch, I believe.
That's for ditch, though.
Yeah.
For ditch. It's the ditch? Okay, that's with Chris, that's later on.
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chair. I think that, I don't think we've got any additions besides that.
No, I don't think so. I'm gonna put it in here.
Second.
And your further discussion on the agenda? I think none, I'll call it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Under open forum, do we have anyone wishing to address the county board? See if anyone, is there anyone out there called in? And no one here at the meeting, so... Next item we have is the consent agenda. Item number one, approve or amend the regular... Bo, go ahead, see if you can fix it first. All right, okay. Okay, Steve. All right, consent agenda. Approve or amend the regular meeting minutes of October 20th, 2020. Item two, accept and file committee of the whole minutes of October 19th, 2020. Item three, approve summary of closed session conducted October 20th, 2020 to continue the evaluation of performance regarding an individual subject to county board authority. We're getting some noise here. Okay. You and I heard that, yeah. Item four, approve engagement letter with Clifton, Larson, Allen for audit of the 2020 financial statements. Item five, approve agreement with Madden, Gallanter, and Hanson Law Firm for outside labor attorney services through August 31st, 2021. Item six, approve request for unpaid leave. Item seven, approve application for on and off sale of 3-2 malt liquor for 2021 Silver Corners. Item eight, approve application for exempt permit for Minnesota Dark Horse Association Central Chapter to conduct a raffle at Jack and Jim's 11025 Duall Road Northeast Foley on February 5th, 2021. Item nine, approve 2021 MPCA Subsurface Sewage Treatment System Program Grant Agreement and Payment. Item 10, adopt resolution accepting donation to the sheriff's office from American Heritage Bank. Any members want anything, any item pulled for discussion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Monty, you wanna start us off?
Turn it over to Amanda.
Amanda, good morning, Amanda.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, County Commissioners. In front of you this morning, you have round two of CARES grants. We have a total allocation of $240,006 in CARES grants this morning for your consideration. I've added six additional grants to your original list that was delivered to you last week. But the total allocation, of course, is the $240,006. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. I've completed the review of all of our 67 applications. Of course, our total request to date it is $868,589. That's the number that I gave you originally. We're waiting for information on 15 applicants. We anticipate that five of the applications received to be denied, totaling approximately $71,962. The fourth one is, we're having that reviewed by a third party, but we anticipate at least four, if not five, applications to be denied. So if you recall, the county allocated $935,000, which includes that initial $200,000 allocation from the initial 735,000. We take, you know, the admin fee out of that, which leaves us with $877,000 for grants. And then, you know, we kind of back out the number of applications that we're gonna, you know, potentially deny, which leaves us with approximately $805,000 worth of allocations. I do have two, possibly three more allocation, or applications that I've received after the deadline. Those total anywhere from $30,000 to $45,000 at the full request of $15,000 each. So we have approximately $26,962,000 left. However, there may be an additional application or two coming in after the fact. So I think we're really close on the numbers that the county originally allocated to BEP to administer the grant program. We have very little left over at the end of the day, and I think you'll see the rest of the applicants, the applications, on your agenda for the 17th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chair.
Steve?
Amanda, I'm just questioning Moliters. They've got two of them, one for the Haven Park and one for the Haunted Acres.
Mm-hmm. They're two separate businesses.
Okay, if that was my next question.
Yep, they're two separate businesses, yep. And we've reviewed applications for two separate businesses owned by the same person before.
Okay, so the next question is, is, well, which one does the bar and the restaurant fall under, do you think?
Not, not the Haunted Acres.
Not the Haunted Acres?
Nope, that's completely separate.
And not the Heaven Park either, Trout Haven Park?
Trout Haven Park is, is the bar and restaurant.
Is the bar and restaurant? Okay, that's the question I had. Warren?
Is the haunted one, are they both nonprofit? Well, the restaurant is, but how about the, no?
For-profit.
They're for-profit. Both of them are, mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As a procedural thing, do we need to extend the deadline then to include these late applications?
As a procedural thing, I, um, it would probably be appropriate to extend that deadline, and I could talk to the CARES committee about doing so. And if there's additional grant dollars out there, we could potentially do that. But timing perspective, how does that look, Monty?
We could do it next meeting, too, I suppose.
Sure, great. Ideally, it'd be nice to have everything wrapped up by the 17th, but somehow, if it goes beyond that, I guess we could always ask the board to have a short special meeting to approve.
Any additional grant?
A final batch, that's right, you know, so it's always possible.
I'm saying, just for the people that, there are three applicants came in after the deadline, so I'm just thinking about those three applicants. Do we need to extend the deadline to, to accommodate those three?
Mr. Chair, so if we have three that came in after the deadline, do you think we'd have more that would say, you extended the deadline? I could have done an application, too, or?
Yeah, that's the bad part.
I mean...
Yeah, there is a potential of that happening.
I mean, maybe we need to look at what our bottom line is here and, you know, what we're gonna have, we're gonna have any more money that we'd open it up. And I guess, if you're gonna open it up, extend the deadline, I would, I would extend it for a certain period of time. And then we look at the amount of money that we have, and then maybe we, maybe we can't do 15,000, because you should be, maybe penalized because you were late and didn't know, or didn't get it in on time. So if you have 10 applicants, maybe we gotta go drop it to 10,000, you know? But I think if we're gonna extend the deadline, we need to extend it for them that said, oh, I missed it, you know?
That's gonna be a tough one.
I don't know, that would be my thought.
Mr. Chair, do we have any final word from the townships yet? What's coming back?
Other than Wataup and St. George, I've heard no other townships are going to have leftover funds. So that's about 90,000 between those two.
90,000?
Yeah.
What do we have planned for that?
Well, I was hoping to talk to you about that on November 10th. I've got about 200,000 worth of nonprofit applications. Bearing in mind, one of those is for 100,000. But, so I was, I intended to update you on the nonprofit applications and the community hall on the 10th, so we can kind of size things up there. Bob also wants to talk to you about possibly some more funding for homeless issues as well on the 10th. So that could be kind of the wrap-up on CARES on the 10th.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Steve.
Amanda, with those three late applications, we have approximately 26,000 right now, probably, left over.
Yeah, roughly.
Did you look at those three applications? Did they apply for the total?
Mm-hmm.
They did.
Yep.
So that puts us at 45,000.
Forty-five.
Do you have any other questions?
I got, I just have a question for Monty. Monty, did a specific township call you that they're having trouble finding their check? Yeah, they, they, they don't know for sure what happened to it.
Their cares, aren't they?
Yeah.
From the state?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it, I did not recall, no.
So there might be some more money coming back there, huh?
Yeah, I mean, it was, wasn't positive, it's not in their account, they don't know where the check is, I mean, you know? But they know they got the check.
Wow, okay.
So obviously, they haven't spent it then either, have they?
No. Well, I think maybe a little bit of it.
Okay, any other questions from any board members?
Is it the desire of the board to extend the deadline?
Oh, um, I, I...
Mr. Chair, I would be in favor of extending the deadline if we can get a clearer handle on how much money we got to spend.
Or, Mr. Chair, we could extend the deadline to, what's the last date of those three applications?
Right.
Last week.
Last week?
That's the deadline.
That's the last application, maybe it should be the deadline, then?
Yeah, should be, should be, yeah.
Should we make that so, or?
I would, I'd make, I'd move to do that, yeah.
To what, extend the deadline?
No, the deadline to the last application.
Yeah, extend it to the last application date.
Oh, okay, I see, I got you, yep.
So that those three are all included.
Yeah.
And then at that point in time, we'd always, we'd probably have to throw a little bit more money in the pot to get those three included.
Right. I don't know that we necessarily would, Commissioner, because we have, you know, the...
Could, could we have the date?
The date?
Put me on the spot, Commissioner. I don't have it.
Actually, Amanda, you will have to give us the dates.
Yeah, I mean, we probably need that date in the motion.
But you could probably just call it into Monty, and we could put the motion under the final end date.
Is that okay? Okay.
Or we could do it later on in the meeting, give her time to find it out.
Yeah.
I can look it up, too.
Okay. All right, any more discussion on that? If not, I'm gonna call that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, anything else for us, Amanda?
Nope, I'll find that date for you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
At least give it to Monty.
Vicki has a question for her. I'm not sure we actually did a motion to officially approve the round two.
Oh, yes, we do. We would have to have a motion to approve the round two grants. Also, that was just extending the deadline, though, until the application of the last grant. We wouldn't need a motion to do that.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve round two of the grants as presented. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. That, those grants can go off. Okay, Monty, you wanna help us out here with your phone and...
We're now ready for Tim. Tim Hanson, you wanna unmute yourself? Are you with us?
He is unmuted.
Yep, sir.
Okay, Tim, and you're gonna have to speak up really loud. Unfortunately, we're having some audio issues, so you actually are talking on my cellphone here in the boardroom. So try and speak up as loud as you can. Thanks, so Tim from Marsh McLennan is here to give you the recommendation for the 2021 Health and Church Supreme Games.
Okay.
Awesome, thanks, Monty. Appreciate the time, everyone, so I could see you there in person. So based on the renewal from preferred one, who is our third-party administrator and stop-loss carrier, we are recommending a 8% overall increase of funding for the medical plan for 2021 with a floor funding increase of 8% for 2022. So as opposed to trying to capture a large increase all in one year, what we are looking to do is spread this out a bit over two years. So as I mentioned, increase of funding for 2021 of 8%, along with at least an 8% increase to funding for 2022, with the caveat that we'll make that final determination at time of renewal next year. The third aspect to our recommendation is to increase our stop-loss level, so our insurance protection, from 60,000 to 70,000 dollars. And then the final recommendation is to utilize our reserve funding in order to pay the expense of the laser and the medical plan should those claims occur. Those are the four recommendations that Marsh and McLennan is providing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? We've gone over this a few times in our meetings. Any questions from any board members? I don't really have any alternatives.
Right. As it is.
Yep. So we do, are going to need a motion to approve the recommendation provided by Marsh McLennan in regards to funding for the employee health plan as presented.
Sure. Yeah, and it might be good, if I may, Mr. Chair, just kind of restate Tim's recommendation again. It's increasing stop-loss from 60,000 to 70.
Okay.
Increase funding for 2021 by 8% and a minimum of 8% again for 2022, and using the self-insurance fund reserves to cover what we're describing as the laser. So that's the summary.
Those three items, yeah, those three recommendations are what would be in the motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation provided by Marsh McLennan and the three recommendations.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. And I think that should take care of it for this year.
Yep, that does, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Unless you've got something else.
Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Okay. We have Roxanne coming in.
She is, Roxane is with us by go-to, looks like.
No, she's here.
She's here!
Sorry, I was messing with my computer, trying to figure out why I couldn't get connected.
Oh, okay.
But I talked to Steve.
Morning, Roxanne.
Good morning. All right. So, take this off so you can understand me. Just want to discuss the RFP process for building inspection services. The last time we went out for bid on this, or not bid, but request for proposals, was back in 2008 when the building code was adopted. And so I have taken that RFP and made a few different changes. I've provided that to you in your packet. But I guess, since we haven't been through this for, you know, more than 10 years, I just, I wanna discuss what that process is going to look like, because the initial process was probably a little bit different than how we will be doing it this round. One of the things that I want to discuss is the timeframe for how long we should post this. We can post it for two weeks, we can post it for four weeks. Ultimately, we send out a couple of invitations to firms that we're aware of that do this type of service, and we'll post a public notice, letting people know that it is, it is up for proposals and to submit those. So we'll need to figure out how long we want to do this. That's going to play into how quickly we can act on it and get somebody in here. Coming up on the end of the year now, generally, we would want somebody in by January 1st. But other factors play into this, like the attorney's office being overloaded with contracts at this time for different types of emergency services. Court facilities are opening up. So I, I don't know what that looks like, but we can push for whatever the board's desire is. So if that's getting somebody in here and contracted by January 1st, then I would suggest posting for just the two-week time period. We'll need to discuss a committee for reviewing this RFP. In the past, it was, based on my notes, it was the DOD Director, the county administrator, and one county commissioner. So just looking for an idea on who would, who this committee would be that would review and then make a recommendation to the county board. We already talked about that, we need a timeframe for signing that contract, if it's by January 1, or if we want to consider extending David Barzoti's contract for an additional month, that, if we want to do it that way, so that we have the time to properly review these. That's something that we can take into consideration. And so maybe we should talk about those couple of items, and then we'll get into the criteria.
Okay, what's, what are the concerns or ideas that any board members have?
There should be a commissioner, too, from the rural area, because they catch all the heck, you know?
And that is, that's up to you guys.
No, especially the ones that, you know, the Foley's controlled by their own and Stockravis, and the rural areas.
Sure.
You know, it should be submitted in the rural area. You know, if, if it don't extend behind, you know, I'll gladly serve on it if it don't go beyond, on the end of the year, you know?
I think...
I'm open to whoever. I, I'll let you guys think about who we would want on that committee.
Steve, go ahead.
I think the question is, is how long it's gonna take to get through, Michelle? Right, to look at the contracts and everything?
Yeah, and so they did it on a fairly tight timeline back in 2008. I think they went out for bids in maybe October, did it in a two-week turnaround, and, and had that available by the end of the year. I, I don't know if they were having the year that we're having. So, you know, just things to take into consideration. I don't think it's unreasonable to think that we could get somebody in here. I think the contract process is always the process that takes the longest. I think we can get the committee together to review the RFPs, and we can make a decision and get those to the board. We can have an interview process. We, we can do that in a relatively quick fashion. I think the, the contract is where our time is going to be spent.
Mr. Chair.
Do, do you feel comfortable with the two-week period for...
I'm pretty comfortable with that. I, I think that most people are going to respond to the RFP that are invited. I, I don't know how many people are actively seeking out RFPs for, for this type of service. My resources are telling me that there's not a lot out there. So I, I'll extend this to the, the businesses that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of a lot of inspection services that are designated as building officials. There's, there's a difference between a building official and a building inspector, and that's the, their certification, and we need a building official. Some of those inspectors are generally related to real estate transactions, where they're inspecting a home simply for the sale of it and not for actual compliance with code.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have a big, a large applicant pool.
No.
Or I don't think you'd get many applications either, but...
I mean, we don't, we don't have to stick to two or three, I mean, we could do three weeks, or... Maybe that's more of an appropriate timeframe.
Okay, so do we want to give us some direction on that? So would that be, I suppose that we should do that in a form of a motion, shouldn't we, to...
Consensus works, but sometimes motions are better, depends upon...
Yep.
The level of agreement on an issue, so...
Yep, okay.
Mr. Chair. Excuse me.
Yes.
But I, I think we're kind of stuck on the two-week period, because we're already in November. And if you start looking at two weeks, then you start looking at the applications, then getting it to the attorney, you know, that puts us into December already, too. So I think it's a timely matter here, you know?
Excellent point, Commissioner Heinen. The last meeting for the county board is December 15th. So we're mid-December that we have to have, unless there's some sort of a special meeting.
Okay. So what action should, would be appropriate here, then? I think that's what the board has to decide.
Mr. Chair, we probably need a motion to go out for RFP first.
Correct.
Well, we could make it all in one motion.
We could make it all in one.
Yeah, a motion to go out and set a timeline right for it. I think that's what we need, right? Yep.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion that we go out for an RFP, and that we allow two weeks for the applications to apply. And I would like to appoint Commissioner Pesel to the, off the county board.
Okay, and would, would you include also the other administrator in the county and a DOD?
Yes, whatever, you know, the, the other...
Okay, on a committee, okay.
The county administrator and the DOD director.
Okay, it's an all-encompassing motion, I hope everyone understands it pretty well.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion's carried, yes, some clear direction now?
Okay, perfect. Just, if you don't mind, just briefly, I wanted to go over the criteria that are in, generally in the RFP, and that's percentage of compensation based on fee generated by the building permit. We, as the county, generate the fee schedule. What we're going to see is how much each firm wants. That's what's going to be in their proposal, is we want 70% of that fee, or 90%, or 100%. So that's where we're gonna see that change, possibly, on what comes in. So it won't be that they're going to be charging more, it's just that they're going to be taking more of the fee that's out there. Discussing how building code could be, it will be incorporated with our permitting process, credentials for all the staff that will perform inspections. They did three client references for the previous RFP. And two that I will be adding is describe your experience with online permitting, since that's gonna be a critical component of our department in the coming months. And then describe your review process, average turnaround time on permits and inspections, and your ability to communicate with customers. So those are the criteria that I think we'll be looking at while reviewing the RFP.
Okay.
So that's what I have for that. Any questions on that? If not, I will get on this and hopefully get things posted within the next week.
Very good. Any questions for anyone? Nope, I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Oh, sorry, one more thing, I just want to, I just, one more thing. I just want to congratulate Benton County on the phenomenal job that we did on the census. We had, I believe it was 75.1% response rate. That was higher than Stearns County, right up there with the metro counties and stuff. And Minnesota alone was the highest response state for the census, so we did well.
What was the state average?
Gosh, I had it all written down, and then I brushed in here. I can send those, I can send those numbers out to you, though.
Good, that'd be very, that'd be interesting, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Roxanne.
At Benton County, we think we're above average, Judge. There's no doubt about that, yeah.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna recess the regular board meeting, conduct the Human Services Board meeting, and turn it over to Chair Pesel.
I'll call the Human Services Board to order, approve the amend agenda. Anything, Bob?
I have one addition.
Okay.
Okay.
And that would be a letter of support slash letter of need.
You want that? That's on the regular, you don't want, that's an?
That would be on the regular agenda versus the consent.
Okay, so I want to move to amend the, approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve with noted changes.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? If not, all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carried. Consent agenda to approve the, amend the regular meeting minutes to October twentieth and then approve the twenty-twenty-one children, children family services agreement. Motion for the consent agenda.
I'd move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
Discussion, not all signified by saying aye. I oppose, same sign, motion carried. Bob?
Morning Commissioners. The one item I wanted to add was that recently East Haven Halfway House has closed and that is something that we, it's just not good when we lose services. Stephanie Ferguson has come to, before the board today. She's looking to open Momentum Center with the same facility and she would like to come up and talk to you about that because she is requesting a statement of need, so. Stephanie?
Thank you for seeing me today. So my name is Stephanie Ferguson. I worked for East Haven for about eight years. I came back just recently, about three years ago, from being away. I had worked for them previously and then we went on an adventure as a family. And East Haven called me when the director was going on, was, was moving on and offered me if I would like to come back. And so I did. When I came back in April of twenty eighteen, there was a death that happened with one of the owners. And, and that kind of started the process of talking about me purchasing the program. That also led to me seeing some investors come through the building that summer as well. And working in property, property management and running an apartment building in Rochester, Minnesota previously, I, I knew who was walking through the building and so I inquired with the owners. And this past April, April eighth of twenty twenty, I purchased the building. And so it was a COVID, a COVID closing, which was kind of sad with your first commercial property. But lots of hurdles that have gone through. Just recently, with COVID and everything that we've kind of encountered as a program and pushing forward, it really has exhausted the owners who, one is elderly and the other not in good health. And that led to the abrupt closing of it just a little over a week ago on Thursday. And the owners and I were in the process of me putting together a purchase agreement for the program and then it just abruptly ended. And so it was something that I was looking to do. And East Haven has been in the Benton County since two thousand and seven they opened up and have been serving males in substance use disorder treatment. So East Haven has operated as a low-intensity program. Low intensity means that they're five to eight hours of programming and that offers them the ability to get out and to do numerous different things. And sometimes it's a collection of several of them, but they can go out and volunteer to take care of legal requirements. They can be working, going back to school, just different things, putting life back together so that they can get out there and be productive members of our society again and be stable. Something that I also pride, East Haven, in what they were doing on was just teaching missed life skills. And so we, as a program, go above and beyond what is required from DHS. And so that, that same program is what I want to continue to use and move forward and I have permission to do so from the owners. And so the same great program that we've had is what I intend to keep. Serving males, twenty-seven of them, from ages eighteen to eighty-nine. And I guess I could say I find it a great need and a great need for Benton County to be able to serve those that are, are wanting to get that fresh new start for themselves and put life back together to live a sober lifestyle. East Haven has placed in a great location with the Allenall Club being close by. We're on the bus system. There's lots of access to jobs and, and housing even nearby. And so we work closely with, with all of those different entities in our area. So I don't know what else you would like me to talk about. I could talk about my program for forever because I love it and I believe in it. I guess I could tell you like an average stay for guys is ninety days. And we are taking clients from right out of various different treatment. So if they're, if they've completed treatment in jail or in prison or if they've already been on the outs and they're completing for a requirement. So we're, we're, our resources are collected from all over our state. And so that is.
Mr. Chair.
Stephanie, I don't know if I'm in, on the same program as what, but did East Haven do a program with the University of Minnesota on, like they came in and, and smart moves or smart things like buying food and stuff like that? Did they?
Yeah.
They, okay. We had that worn through the extension.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was really.
Minnesota food extension?
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought that was really, you know, when I got, when I seen it through Amanda's deal that it closed, that was my first thought that, you know, I think the extension service did something with this facility. It was really, they had a full video of what, you know, they were trying to do and I thought it was really good. I would, I, I supported it at that time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So you need this certificate of need then to get qualified for funds then to support the program?
To submit with my application to DHS, yes.
All right, that's all we need. So, Mr. Chair, that's, that facility, is that located in Sherburne County? Do you need?
No, it's, it's in Benton County.
Okay.
Yep.
Right, yes.
It's on the other side of like Highway ten, that's how I always explain it. It's on the anchor, it's up the street from the anchor of McDonald's, Wendy's. So we're right up the road, right before the fork in the road when you get to Mayhew Lake Road.
Oh, okay, okay. Then I had to mix up with something else. Okay.
One more question, Mr. Chair. Do you, do you have a? I think they did, is they had a handle on the success rate that went out afterwards too. I, I can't remember, but I think it was pretty high.
Yes, there are different. I would say our completion, like if I'm just like looking at all the, the material in my mind right now. Yes, I would say it was, we, who we were discharging, we were taking in all the time. So our, our successful discharges and unsuccessful discharges. And an unsuccessful discharge wouldn't be because there was use. It could be because maybe the program was not a good fit anymore for that individual, so it wasn't always a relapse that had taken place. But yes, the, the success rate would be pretty high. And I, I'm sorry that I don't have a percentage for you. But also our occupancy rate, minus COVID and having the shutting down of everything in the state, our occupancy rate is, is right around the ninety-three to ninety-seven percent. So we're always, it, and, and it goes down a little bit in the summertime because homelessness is more acceptable. So I, it's just being the honest truth. It's, the weather is more conducive towards it. People are more willing to allow others to couch hop during the summertime. And so those numbers will drop just a little bit, but not, not, not nearly as what COVID had done for us, so.
Mr. Chair, Monty, who, who would draw up that letter of support then?
I have a real short letter of support already drawn up.
Oh, you do, okay.
It's just two sentences. I can quickly read it if you'd like.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's addressed to the Department of Human Services. The Benton County Human Services Board has been requested to supply a letter of need for Momentum Center to open a twenty-seven-bed substance abuse treatment program at the former site of East Haven Halfway House, address indicated. Following a discussion with the board and staff from Human Services, we agree that there is a need for this facility in our county. Please let this letter serve as a letter of support of the need for such services in our county. And it's signed by the chair, so.
We need some formal or not?
Well, we, we don't have today's date on there, so we're going to run back, get the updated letter of need and have you sign it done.
Okay.
I move for, Chair sign the letter of support.
Second.
Second it.
Discussion, not all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, I was going to just, I was, first of all, I had to confuse with the one that's just in the Sherburne County. That program they have there, that's what, I thought that first aspect you were talking about. How does this differ from that one?
Maybe Sandy could address that.
I think we're talking about Rivercrest.
Yeah, that's it.
And so they're very different. River, Momentum Center would work towards sobriety. Rivercrest does as well, but therefore the chronic abibit, they allow drinking.
Right, I know they do, yeah.
Within the facility, so they're, to keep the individual safe even though they continue to drink. Where the focus of this program is sobriety.
All right, okay, I knew there was, yeah, it had to be a difference. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions while you have me here?
Mr. Chair, are, are most of them Benton County residents or are they from all over?
All over the state.
I.
They would be from all over, but they would be, sorry.
They would be from all over our state. But what we find as our collection would be kind of in our tri-county area here would be what we see majority. It really is, depends on the service personnel working with the client on what their recommendations would be. So it may be that they should not return back to their county of residence and they should make Benton County their new county of residence. So those could be recommendations that they need to follow, so.
Mr. Chair. And that's through the courts, right?
Correct.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, when you get time sometime today, will you give me a buzz?
I sure will.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
I'm going to turn it back to the chair.
Okay. We'll call the regular County Board meeting back to order and next up we have Chris Spurte, County Engineer.
Good morning, MinDOT. He's went along Highway, trunk highway twenty-three.
Yeah, good morning Commissioners. If you would just allow me a few moments. I never can seem to break away from the office early enough to get over here to set this up before the meeting, but I think it always helps to have visuals. That's why I want to bring up the agenda items. So recently I was notified, I received a notification from MinDOT of their need to acquire some easements on a future project. This project would be the Highway twenty-three Mill and Overlay project. It's primarily a Mill and Overlay project from Foley all the way out to Malaca. But they had a couple of locations. They're actually reconstructing Highway twenty-three within the city limits here of Foley. And then outside of Foley, at a couple intersections, they're actually adding a left turn lane. So they'll be widening the road. So we received what's called early notification letters from MinDOT expressing their desire to acquire additional easements. And, and these were the attachments to the letters showing the parcel. So what you see in the yellow is the whole parcel. And what I surmised is they're going to be needing some temporary easements on all the parcels that I received. They look like they're all just temporary easements. Ten-foot temporary easement outside of the, the permanent highway right-of-way. This is what this looks like on aerial. So this parcel, this is Highway twenty-three right here. This is actually our County Road fifty-three in Oak Park. So they're, they're doing some widening of the roadway here, I think for, you know, maybe a right turn lane here. So you can barely see it on the aerial. This red dashed line would be a temporary easement that they're wanting to acquire from Benton County. We received several letters, so I'll, I'll go through these. This additional parcel, I didn't realize that this was a Benton County parcel. So this is still at Oak Park. This is, if you're familiar with the area, this is the Creamery here. They're saying that this is a Benton County parcel. RGIS listed as a MinDOT parcel. So that means I'm going to have to be doing some research and digging. There's somewhere some paperwork didn't get filed correctly or something. MinDOT thinks it's Benton County. Our records looks like it shows it's, it's still MinDOT's. But regardless, they need an extra ten feet outside of the permanent highway right-of-way to do some work there. Now this larger parcel, I think you'll recognize it once we look at the aerial. If this was a mall kiosk, we would say you are here, so. Up against Highway twenty-three, it looks like they need some temporary easement on this parcel as well. Continuing, so going north, there's the jail and courts facility. This is a large overview of that parcel, but then they provide some, some zoomed-in shots here. Obviously, they need red, what I, it looks like all their indications is red. Wherever we see red is temporary easement they need, so. As I think of this logically, well, of course, they need a temporary easement to go back onto our property to correct any grade or, or readdress pavement tie-in issues when they reconstruct the roadway. And they're just asking for a temporary easement, probably to, once again, to do some grading, make sure the grading all matches up once they're done with construction across here, so. So this is just an early notification letter. There's no action required at this time, but the board should anticipate that sometime in the future, they'll be sending us an actual, an agreement that will obviously need the board's signature to approve to allow them to some temporary access with that in the future, so. Any questions?
Yes. Unless they're not doing any left or right turns off besides them, further up?
No, actually, what I'd seen of the preliminary, so far preliminary engineering, like six, Arkansas six, Arkansas seven, will have turn lanes. I don't know, I haven't looked into too much, but must be enough, enough right-of-way already at those locations that they can fit it in, so.
But they were going to, they're going to put turn lanes on all of them?
Yeah, so Arkansas six, seven, here in Oak Park, that one fifty-three, nine as well, the, the major roadways. That's what I know of in Benton County, and I think they're doing something similar on the Malax County side as well, so.
That's good.
So those actual locations will actually be more like a reconstruction. And I think they're regrading the whole width of the pavement as opposed to just adding on. In between those intersections, it's just a Mill and Overlay project, so.
Hey, Chris, it's a, it's a twenty-twenty-two project.
Correct, thank you for clarifying. Twenty, so not next year, but in twenty-twenty-two. But I anticipate those agreements will come sometime next year in advance of the actual construction project.
That's when the roundabout goes out too, right?
Correct, that's, that roundabout just right out here will be part of this, the same project. That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have some engineering services agreement.
All right, so yeah, the next item I had, and I'll go ahead and preface this by saying this, this is still being reviewed by the County Attorney's Office. But I thought I'd just keep it on the agenda. We could talk about it now. And even if we don't approve the agreement today, if we talk about it and it comes back later from the County Attorney's Office, it's good to go. Maybe it'll just show up as a consent item on a future agenda. But what this agreement is, is with Widset Engineers, little over a month ago, well, about, about two months ago, we issued a request for proposals to seek engineering services on designing the replacement of about five township bridges across the county. It's something we've talked about in the past. I should clarify, that's four township bridges and actually one bridge here in City. I should clarify, that's four township bridges and actually one bridge here in the city of Foley. Um, those bridges are unique to our bridges in that we can receive, uh, bridge replacement money for the engineering, uh, cost of this, uh, above ten thousand dollars. The townships will be on the hook for the first ten thousand dollars of engineering and the first ten thousand of, uh, construction cost. So we issued an RFP to have some outside, we don't have the capacity or staff to, to do that in-house, so, uh, we thought that we would issue an RFP. We received four proposals back, and me and my assistant reviewed all four proposals. We, we looked at the merit and technicality, uh, merits of the consultants, before we looked at the, the, um, the cost, although cost did factor into about twenty-five percent of our total score. And, uh, Woodset Engineers end up having the highest score of those. If approved, this agreement would cost about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Those costs would include the design services to do a hydraulic analysis of all five of those structures, recommend the appropriate replacement structure, uh, assist in getting permits through the DNR, and, uh, construction inspection when, when it comes time to replace it. So, um, that's kinda, kinda that in a nutshell. And like I said, I, it's in the attorney's office for review, so I'm not, even though it appeared on the agenda as an action item, uh, we can hold off on actually approving that if the board chooses, and I could bring it back as a consent item. But, but if there's any questions or concerns, we can address those now, and.
Mister Chair, uh, in our packet here, you got the estimated labor and expense costs at a hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars?
Yeah, so that would, that would, I said a hundred and forty-eight thousand, so that's for the design part, that's additional, the difference between those two would be the actual construction, um, inspection costs. So yeah, you're right, the total contract is, is, is that number. I don't anticipate all those, uh, being next year, most of the design costs will happen next year. And then when we actually, um, uh, are prepared to let the construction contracts, I intend on using Woodset to do the construction inspection as well. So thank you for clarifying that.
Mister Chair, we got, we got funds in that township bridge.
Yeah, that's right, so this is, this is an actual, we get an allotment each year to replace, uh, township bridges. Uh, we are sitting at just under seven hundred thousand dollars in that account. So that's why I feel confident that we will be able to replace some of these structures next year. So this is a direct allocation from the eight, the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund, so think of it as the gas tax proceeds. So we do get an allotment, um, to replace township bridges. So this isn't coming directly from the, the bonding bill, uh, that we're hoping to get for our own bridges, so. Kind of a, kind of a thing that township bridges may be able to get replaced easier than, than the county bridges unfortunately, so.
But evidently for that amount of money that we got in there, we're not gonna be able to do all them, are we?
Probably not.
So you're gonna have to get a priority list or something?
Uh, yeah, so that would be communicating with, um, the townships. I know City of Foley, in about twenty-twenty-two, they're planning, um, some street work next to that bridge, so we may try to see if we can coordinate that, and that may affect the, the timing of when that actual bridge gets, gets replaced, um, as well, so. So that's, uh, and maybe I should ask that if it wasn't anybody thinking about it, but the reason why we're holding the contract is because it's like a state aid project. It's, it's in our state aid account, uh, the contracts will have to go through us. The plans will have to be prepared and created like they were a state aid, bridge replacement project. And we unfortunately get, uh, get tasked with managing those, those contracts and things like that, so. But we can, we can track our time and, and get reimbursed for the engineering part of that as, as well, so.
Okay, so we're gonna be getting that contract back after Michelle.
Yeah, yeah, we can wait till we get, uh, the county approval, county attorney approval on that. So that's, and that's all I had for agenda items under regular dit- or regular board meeting. We'll talk about ditches later.
Okay, anybody else got any questions for Chris as long as he's here?
Is this an action item?
No, not, we, we have to have Michelle look at it.
Yeah, I originally got it on the agenda just to keep the ball rolling as an action item, but since we don't have the contract approved, we can forego the action.
We can get her next time.
Yeah, do that.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay, next item, we have this commissioner meeting updates. I can start out, cause, yeah. Yeah, I didn't have any.
Well, that's why.
Surprise, yeah.
I didn't either.
I had one, Mister Chair. The ES, ESM emergency regional meeting, and basically, uh, Monte has to get that contract out, right? Just to, just to get, yeah, just to get the agreement and get it sent back right away, cause we're about one of the only counties that haven't signed it through the nine counties, so. That's it.
Okay, uh, Ed, you have any?
Um, yeah, I just had one, one, we had our BEP board meeting after our quarterly meeting and, uh, some discussion, you know, on what Mando was doing, what we heard before. And then we still are, have some ongoing discussion with the City of Sock Rabbits about a, a seat on that board. That's, um, gonna have to go before the executive committee and then see what happens there.
Do they, do they ever have somebody on that, have a seat on that board or not?
It's rotating between the, the City of Foley, City of Rice, and the City of Sock Rabbits.
Oh.
So they rotate it every year, and there's been some talk about changing that to, you know, making it a two-year, you know, and.
Yeah.
Um, I guess if you're gonna, if you're gonna give Sock Rabbits one, what are you gonna do with the other two cities? If you were there for the last, you know, prior to Sock Rabbits having it, uh, Sarah from Foley had it, and, and, uh, she was equally as good, so, you know, it's, it's a tough sled, and I think, uh, you know, we have to draw the line between this being too much government and more, we want it to maintain more of a private sector deal, so. Um, I, I think the executive committee is gonna meet here on the seventeenth, when our next meeting is, and see what happens, so. That was all that I had.
Okay, actually, I had three of them, that's, um, I was at the BEP one also, King Banyon spoke there and talked about the economy of Benton County and stuff, and whatever it is, it's, I guess most of you guys were there, I guess we don't have to rehash that, but the unemployment rate in Benton County was six point eight percent, something like that, or lower, way lower than the state average, so Benton County's doing pretty well. Highway twenty-three coalition, uh, we had a meeting, um, virtual meeting on there, and we're talking about different priorities, and we're still gonna try to push for getting funds for the preferred route study between Foley and Malaca. About eight hundred thousand dollars will probably be the bonding bill in twenty-twenty-two probably. And then, uh, seven W, we had a meeting, uh, there also, and picked the priorities for twenty-twenty-five, and Benton County doesn't have anything in that slot, but we did get quite a bit in twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three and stuff, so we're faring pretty well, but, that's all I have.
Okay, commissioner concerns, anyone?
Yes, I had one, one call on, uh, somebody that was into the facility last week, and they were talking about, uh, and I know they, they said it was busy. Our personnel down at the desk was very rude to them. Um, they were commenting that, you know, they wanted their license renewed, and there was people voting, and that individual person just said that, you know. Yeah, it was, it was a uniform security person.
Well, a normal person was out for about a week, so the security company brought in some.
Oh, okay.
And, yeah, it could have been a couple of different folks.
Sure, okay, okay.
I'm, I'm missing that too, the supervisor.
Yeah.
I know the one we have, Christine, is Tyler.
Yeah, that's what I kinda thought, but.
I, I have one concern, um, we've got some meetings coming up, with the public hearings, and if, you know, when the last time we had a board meeting full of people, maybe, uh, we should start really saying they have to limit the number of people in here, or mask them, or, or something. We gotta do something, I think, because we've had some, you know, quite a few cases come through here, and, um, I don't know how we, how we do that, but, um.
Maybe pick a bigger, bigger venue, bigger venue, too.
Yeah.
One of the simple solutions is we, we thin the chairs out.
Okay.
And then if the chairs are full, no one else can come in.
Okay.
And, so that's one option. It's, uh, if we could do that.
Yeah, because at the last, uh, open, open forum meeting with the ditches, it was completely full.
Yeah.
And moving forward with our next agenda, you know, there's gonna be a lot of people.
Yeah, we should be paying attention.
The ditch is already.
Is, is, is we could have maybe folks wait outside, and then when they wanna testify, they come in, they testify, and then they leave. They couldn't just sit, you know, in the room.
How do you keep them six feet apart outside there, though? You know, it's not a very big area.
Right, we don't wanna clog the hallway.
Right.
Or do we pick a different venue with more area? You know, could we, could we use City of Sock Rabbits' facility for the public hearing?
That's always an option if you.
Where again?
City of Sock Rabbits.
The community room.
Community op, community room.
Um, I think potentially we have to, of course, impose some controls there, too.
Sure.
But you're right, it's a heck of a lot bigger.
Right, and you can, you can see from outside the glass, you know, how full it is and stuff.
Correct, cause I think they limit it to forty or fifty people in that room now. So that would probably, that was a, that's a very good point, that'd probably give us enough room.
Either that or Foley gym, or Catholic school gym or something.
They got their, uh, yeah, we have that, where the, where the school board holds their, school board meetings, it's very large.
Okay.
Over here.
So we should look at a larger venue, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to have all the IT stuff.
School over here, they got a very large meeting, the intermediate school over in Foley, they got a very large. They could separate them out more.
Yeah. And sometimes schools are really touchy about letting out.
Yeah, I know they are.
Yep, uh, yeah, cause it wasn't much, it wasn't much compliance at the last time, I think, so.
Clear the vehicles out of the Public Works Building.
Yeah, so, anyhow.
Not a bad idea.
No, it's not.
I mean.
Pretty good idea.
You know, because.
Put chairs six feet apart, and yeah.
Everyone that's coming's a farmer, I'm assuming, you know, so.
That'd be fine.
That, you know, we could do it that way, because that would be a big enough facility.
Good idea.
Yeah, I think you're right, because we can easily move vehicles outside, and it's heated, it's comfortable.
Mm-hmm. Do we need some IT capabilities in there, or?
Oh, I'm sure we can make it work.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got great staff.
We got, yeah, we got good IT people.
I, I, I think, yeah, we could probably ask, we got a ditch authority coming up, we could probably ask Chris if he has some things, but I think we have to be real recognize that fact that, uh.
So if you're comfortable with that, why don't we think about just using the warm storage unit for ditch, these big ditch things?
Yep.
Okay.
We can scatter people out a lot.
Right, that's just.
Okay. All right, yeah.
Like that.
Yeah, yeah, let's try something like that.
Let's get some good public use out of that building, right?
Yeah, right.
And, and then will that meet, yeah, that would probably meet the, uh, open meeting law requirements and all that stuff.
We don't have to, we probably wouldn't be able to record it there, but.
Well, sure, I mean, it's, it, it would be totally fine to have a meeting here, as long as you announce the date.
Right, right.
In a place, right.
Just wouldn't, yeah, we probably, we wouldn't be able to record it, though.
Oh, yes, we would be able to.
Oh, sure.
I mean, on, on YouTube or anything? That's my point, I mean.
Yeah, we, we're not set up out there to.
Right, yeah, so we do, do everything else, but we just wouldn't be in YouTube.
Still do a go-to, Nina, if anyone to be revoked.
Sure, okay.
Oh, sure.
Okay, good, good, good.
All that takes is a screen, a projector, and a computer.
Right, and then after the meeting, that Steve could throw it back on YouTube, too, though. Could stream it on YouTube.
I don't know, you know, I'm not sure if we had the ability to record, I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm not sure there, but.
Okay, well, we'll make, we'll make it work anyway, as long as we're in full compliance, we're not, I don't think we have to worry too much about the YouTube part of the ditch authority.
Yeah, that's not that big of a deal.
So.
We'll make it work, okay.
Okay, all right.
Good point, very good point.
Um, now we set committee of the whole, and designate any previously held meetings as necessary committee. See, Monte, I know you had one.
Settle in here for a second, we got a few, okay.
Really?
Okay, Jerry Machi invites you to a virtual tour practices. Uh, they wanna, he's offered these dates, December second, the third, or the fourth. Uh, starting at nine AM, and he says about two hours, so it would be a virtual experience.
And what's this about?
Well, you know, every, every year, and usually in the summer, they do the bus tour practices, so they want, they try, they wanna try and do something virtually. So it, it's like showing you videos and stuff, and having, yeah.
Okay, that's what it is.
December.
East St. Cloud thing, you know, with the big boxes.
I, I, yeah, for me, the second would work the best.
To me, the third would work the best.
I got a darn dentist appointment at ten, what time of the day would it be?
Nine o'clock for about two hours, so nine to eleven.
Second, third, or the fourth, I said?
Second, third, or fourth.
Friday, yeah.
Fourth would work.
Fourth would work.
The fourth, I'm traveling in the second.
Yep.
Okay, nine o'clock?
That is a Friday, looks like, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't like the Friday meeting, but we'll do it.
Cause you got a dentist appointment.
Yeah, I got a dentist on, on Thursday, but I could probably get that, uh, I hate to change the hard, hard enough to get.
So Friday the fourth.
Okay.
Nine o'clock here, of course. Virtual tour practices, okay. All right, uh, November fifth, a Thursday, eleven-thirty, GSDC meeting of the investors and partners, put that under committee of the whole listing. Vicki, would board members have the Zoom information?
What's that one?
I might have to forward this.
Could you please? Yeah, we'll forward you the Zoom information if you wanna be in that one, that's Thursday, the fifth, eleven-thirty, GSDC. We'll get you the Zoom information, okay.
That's Thursday.
What, what? I'm, yeah, I'm, I, yeah, I, I have a meeting at ten, so I'm not gonna be able to be there anyway.
I got meetings, too.
So here's, here's the next one, this takes a little bit of explanation. We're in the midst of the class comp process. Employees have submitted, uh, I'm sorry, Tessa, our consultant, has prepared draft job descriptions for all employees. The process that was set up by David Drone allowed them to appeal the job description if they didn't like something about it. So for example, they disagree with the years of experience, so they disagree with the education requirement. Tessa has attempted to resolve as many appeals as she can, but there's about three or four that remain unresolved. The process has then, you all, hearing that appeal. So from, what I, we talked to Tessa just yesterday, so there's about three or four unresolved appeals, which she's gonna ask you to consider. Uh, so you would hear, you would see the submission from the employee. The employee will be offered the opportunity to speak in front of you all, present their case, and you'll hear from Tessa also, and then ask you to make a decision on that appeal. So I wanted to propose to you, this, November sixteenth, uh, for that process, November sixteenth. It's a Monday.
Yeah, that's.
I have an AMC transportation thing at nine o'clock, and.
Well, AMC general government meeting I have done for November sixteen.
Yeah, I think they're doing all the.
All the committee meetings are that, that day and that morning.
So November sixteenth will not work?
No, no.
No, not at all.
Here's my other challenge, is, uh, I'm gonna, we, the board, uh, needs to, uh, review and make decisions on the nonprofit, the Cares nonprofit. So if you're gonna make a formal decision at your last meeting in November, we would have to obviously have a committee of the whole to review those applications before. So, uh, let's see here, let's back up a bit, then.
We're doing the ninth.
So we said, we decided that the sixteenth wasn't gonna work, right?
Right.
Oh, ninth is your, yeah.
Come on, it's deer hunting season.
How about Friday, dude, that's, um, it's Friday the thirteenth.
Really?
We, me and Mr. Peshal have boarded canvas that day.
Yeah.
Board canvas, okay.
I have, um, insurance collaboration at ten-thirty.
I'm gonna back up, back up one more, then. The, the challenge is, is the deadline for nonprofits to apply is the tenth. And I wanna be able to get to you the application, so you can see them for a couple days beforehand, and, and review them. And I also wanna just drop them right on you and say, hey, make a decision.
How about the eleventh?
That's some veterans.
That's close, Veterans Day.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't mean we can't come in. Sorry, Monte.
You know, um, again, one possibility, uh, one possibility would be, um.
We gotta call it the tenth.
Sure, so again, the deadline is the tenth.
Oh.
Um, I might get something like last minute, so one possibility is, um, you have a committee of the whole sometime perhaps after the seventeenth, but it means asking you all to have a special meeting then of the board to approve, to approve the Cares grants, it does set the stage for having a special meeting, which hopefully that'd be fine with you all. You may be asked to have a special meeting to approve some last-minute business grants anyway.
Correct.
So.
Let's make it the nineteenth, then.
You wanna move then to? You wanna move then to, let's see, how about Thursday the nineteenth?
Yep, uh, we have BEP board meeting that morning.
Seven thirty till nine, we could do it.
We could do it at, ten or something. Ten, ten thirty.
We got Tri-County Solid Waste that day too.
Do we?
How about the afternoon?
Okay.
What do we got on the nineteenth?
Jake and I got Tri-County Solid.
Oh, okay.
How far do we dare push this out?
Well, uh, because if you're willing to have, and able to have a special meeting, it gives us a little more flexibility. We just have to have a three-day posting, probably it'd be good to schedule that special meeting today and so we can get it posted and so on. So I'm sorry, it, would the nineteenth or twentieth work for this committee of the whole?
This, I don't know, I, they said the nineteenth wouldn't work, because.
Well, after like ten o'clock.
Oh, after ten it would work.
Okay.
When's your, no, you got your solid waste meeting at ten.
I got it down here for the nineteenth, how about you?
I don't have it, I didn't have it down yet, so.
I don't, you know, and that's at ten o'clock.
Oh, that's at ten, okay.
Well, the twentieth, I guess, yeah.
Go after dinner, I suppose.
Okay, how about the twentieth then?
Twentieth.
Twenty.
Okay, so nine o'clock, twentieth, and again, the topic would be reviewing the nonprofit cares applications and the, the GMG classing comp appeals. So, um, might be kind of a long morning for you, I would be prepared for at least a couple of hours. Um, there could be more appeals, I know of about three or four right now. So nine o'clock, nineteenth, for the committee of the whole.
Yeah.
Um, excuse me, the twentieth, thank you, Vicky, the twentieth.
I have a question on these appeals. Was, these appeals are because she couldn't make a, they couldn't get agreement with the employees?
Yeah, well, that's exactly right. You know, so in other words, the employee says, I think it ought to be this in terms of years of experience education, and she says, no, I think it ought to be that. That's kind of what it boils down to in most cases, yeah. We've often seen where employees, uh, believe that a greater number of years of experience are really required or maybe more education than the consultancies, that's been pretty common. Um, but Tessa's been able to re- resolve the vast majority of the appeals, uh, but we're down just to a few.
Okay.
Um, so there will be one more level of appeals to at some point later where employees have an opportunity to appeal their assigned new pay grade, and some of those could eventually come to you too, so. Thank goodness it only happens once every ten years.
Right.
Okay, so the next step is we should schedule that special board meeting then to approve, the, the primary purpose will be to approve any final cares grants, so, um.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, thank you, that's what I was looking at.
They give you the three days?
Twenty-fourth.
I don't give you the three days.
Yeah, twenty-fourth would be fine, yeah, say early.
I thought you had three days.
So about, let's just say nine o'clock on the twenty-fourth, special board meeting. Right now, topic is again approving cares grants. And that gives us time to get checks out the door.
Wait, did we get that date from Amanda for the closing?
I'm sorry, I haven't heard from her.
Oh, okay. She'll get that tomorrow too.
We'll make sure that the minutes reflect though whatever that final application date was.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, let's see here. I think that takes, oh, one more.
No, my November is already full, come on.
Gosh. Okay, now, we need to have a final committee of the whole for a final budget review
Oh.
to talk about elected official salaries and fee schedule revisions. So, uh, the window for that is sometime between December second and December eighth. Because that really shouldn't happen until after the TNT hearing. So anytime between December second and December eighth for those three.
Yeah, well, it, the only thing it could be is the second for me, the rest of them are all, you got AMC conference in there.
Right.
The following week, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's seventh and eighth.
Second or third we could have, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we already, somebody's not here in the second, Jake's.
Not here, I'm traveling, I can try to find out what time that is, but, okay. Uh, we have December fourth down for a meeting, correct?
Yep.
What's that for?
That's that two hour virtual tour with, uh.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay, I got that down.
Why don't I try and get my, if it's Thursday, I could try and get my dentist appointment changed, I think, maybe that would be it.
December third?
Yeah.
December third.
See if I can get it in the afternoon or something and.
And, yeah, obviously, we can move the, the time around for you, sure.
Why don't we go, what time is that?
Ten thirty.
Well, why don't we go after dinner then?
Okay, we could do that.
How are you gonna feel after your dentist appointment? What are they gonna do, fully do?
I'll feel, you know what, I'll feel poorer.
We could have one o'clock, couldn't we?
So one, one o'clock on the third?
Yep.
One PM?
I'm out of town, but I could, I could do a virtual.
Nah, let's, no, we want you here, Jake.
Yeah, we want, we want your input, output, yeah.
When you're back in town, sir.
Yeah, it's a pretty big discussion, elected official salaries, final budget review, yeah.
When are you back, Jake?
Um. Eleventh, so.
Yeah, what, what day?
Eleventh I'm coming back.
December, um.
December eleventh I'm coming back.
What time?
So the fourteenth, fifteenth?
We're supposed to have it between, before the second and between the second and the eighth.
Well, ideally, ideally, well, that's just more so for me because then I can get, you know, the final resolutions in your board packet.
Fifteenth, yeah.
You know, it isn't absolutely necessary, if it, if it's, if the eleventh is a date that works, then let's do the eleventh then. And we'll just have to, I'll bring the.
I'm coming back on the eleventh, but I don't know what time, it's later, so how about the fourteenth?
Yeah, we have to go to the fourteenth then.
The Monday before your last board meeting of the, of, yeah.
Can you do that?
You know, one thing is, I just thought of this, is, um, never mind, never mind, that's fine, uh. Again, all that gives me time.
Hear what you have to say.
Let's, we'll make it work.
All right, good answer, good answer.
Okay, and then the next day is your final board meeting of the year.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
You know, I, I have all the resolutions ready in draft form well before that, just you made a plug and some numbers in.
Okay.
You know, it, it's not that big a deal. I can make it work.
We gonna do it at nine o'clock then on the fourteenth?
Yes.
Nine o'clock on the fourteenth, okay.
That's what I got written down.
Yeah, it's kind of a bummer that last meeting is so early in the month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd give, it'd be nice to have a little more time.
Yeah.
So, sigh of relief, that's all I have.
And the, and the meeting on the, on the first is early, right?
I'm sorry, was that?
First, we got Truth and Taxation on the first.
Yeah, that's at night.
So you, thanks for pointing it out, you bet. So you're meeting, um.
Six.
The first meeting of December, that, that night is at seven PM, that's right, thanks for reminder.
Mm-hmm.
It's that evening at seven, TNT hearing.
Yep.
December first, we have a board meeting and then we have a meeting at seven?
No.
No, the board meeting.
That is the board.
That is the meeting.
At seven at night?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, oh, nice.
So you don't have to meet twice the same day, we've always combined that with a regular meeting. And we, we keep the agenda really light, so you won't be here late, yeah, so. The late time uses carries away most departments, so.
And that's here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
December first, good.
Okay, Vicky, you know, maybe just for the record, could you just do a quick review of all that for us?
Hang on, yeah.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I started out with Friday, December fourth, was the virtual SWCD tour practices at nine in the boardroom. November fifth, which is a Thursday, is that GSDC meeting of investors and partners. And I'm gonna be sending you the Zoom information. Friday, November twentieth at nine. The GMG class and comp appeals and to review the nonprofit cares applications. Uh, special board meeting on November twenty-fourth at nine in the boardroom. To re, to approve the final cares act grant. And then Monday, December fourteenth at nine, final budget review. Twenty twenty-one fee schedule revisions and elected official salaries. And I'll put these on that cow list and email it to you again.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Yep.
Working, I was gonna work this hard at the end of the.
Wow. We don't want to get rid of you guys yet.
Move to approve the cows, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Most in the second approve the, the whole meetings, discussion, although in favor, six or five is saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, motion's carried, now we need a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor, six or five is saying aye.
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 It's carried, we'll take a little break before we start the county ditch authority. Oh my.
Lots of meetings coming up.
It's gonna be a very busy November, December, I'm bet, yep.
Wow. Well, me too, you know, I'm telling you, when, when it's muzzleloader season, I'm hot.
My last year, so I'm gonna have fun at this time.